Good evening. Welcome to the Double Oak Town Council Meeting for Monday, February 6, 2023. The time is 7:00 P.M. Our language call real quick.
Mayor Donald.
Here.
Mayor Proketa Johnson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Proketa Shonred.
Here.
Mr. Wizinham.
Here.
Ms. Parsons.
Here.
Ms. Hillier.
Present.
We have it.
Thank you, ma'am. Now Scott, would you give us an invocation this evening?
Our heads, dear heavenly Father. We come here, once again, to do the business of the town, and we ask for your wisdom and the guidance that you can give us to remove our personal biases and do what's best for the town. Please keep our public officers safe, our police, our firefighters, and especially our military serving overseas. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Folks, this evening, Mr. Johnson's going to lead the pledges. If you'll remain standing, you're going to have a moment of remembrance for the Double Oak Police Officers John Mestes and Lonnie Snead. Officer Mestes in the watch was February 7, 2022. Officer Snead's in the watch was February 15, 2022. Patrick.
Pledgees to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored by the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the people. Texas, one must stay under God, one and indivisible.
All right, that brings us now to citizens' comments on non-adjunctive subjects. Mr. Hospital. If you'll come up, please. Welcome and good seeing you.
Thanks.
And if you'll identify yourself and represent, please.
My name is Brandon Holesworth, and I live at 135 North Wiltland Trail. I've been here at Double Oak for, I guess, about eight and a half years, and I absolutely love our city. I'm here as a concerned citizen. On September 19, 2022, Councilwoman Parsons made a comment that comes deeply offensive and is a racial slur. She directly commented to the citizens who were in attendance, watching my livestream, I lost my train of thought due to the peanut gallery. The term peanut gallery is a commonly known expression of disdain and contempt for poor blacks, for poor blacks, poor people, or the unwashed. It was historically used to refer to people who could not afford regular seats at theaters and therefore sadly trip or bow to these seats. The comment was made during the discussion of the tax rate and the town budget, intended to demean and minimize the voice of the people in the matter. If you watch YouTube, you can see this comment at the two hours and 17 second mark. Attorney Mark Burnham was there that evening and heard the comment. I'm officially making a formal complaint to the town of Double Oak regarding Councilwoman Parsons' racial comment. Mrs. Parsons, I'm also asking for your resignation from the town council for your appalling behavior because I could not have any only one for your business.
Anyone else on non-adjunctive subjects this evening? All right, council. Council, if you will indulge me here, let's go to item number four, mayor council members and staff reports. And I'll just start with council this evening over here. Patrick, anything for you?
I have nothing.
Okay. Tom?
I have nothing.
Scott?
Nothing to me.
Casey?
Yes, I'd like to respond to Mr. Holesworth's comments. Did I get your last name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I am very sorry for my comments at the prior meeting. I apologize in a future meeting as well. I honestly did not know it was a racial slur. I had never heard that connotation or that connection before. I had heard of it in the term of when someone is, when you have a crowd of people, and I've seen it like on our old show or something, and I had heard of it referred to that as when people were shouting and hollering, and that's what was happening and what was happening in the meeting of that night. You know, the citizens are asked to respectfully remain quiet until they're called upon to speak, and that wasn't happening that night. And as I said, I apologize that I lost my temper. I apologize that I said what I did. I apologize to those individuals. I apologize to the citizens of the next meeting. And so, I am, I am deeply sorry for that. I'm sorry that it's coming up again. I don't know what else to say other than I apologize for my actions that night, and we have covered this in prior meetings.
Anything else, Chris?
No, I mean, I love this town. Serving this town has been one of the most challenging things I have done in the last, you know, it hasn't been the entire time that I've been serving. Tensions in this town have been very high for, I don't know, the last year, maybe? And it makes me very sad to see that in Double Oak. I'm very sad to see people tearing each other apart. I, I have my thoughts as to why this is coming up right now because of things that were said at the last meeting. And I get it. But I, I would love to see Double Oak come together and be a town that loves each other and takes care of each other again. I, I hope that, the way I live my life, that I've always tried is I want to love people, care for them. First, I love God first, and I believe that he commands me to love others, and I try my hardest to do that. I want to be right by people, and I ran for this position because I thought I would be doing something that would help the town. I never imagined that it meant that I would be torn apart, that I would feel uncomfortable walking down the aisles of a grocery store because of the way certain citizens look at me. And I guess that's just part of what goes with it. I said from the beginning, I'm not a political person. But I just want to say that out loud, that I wish, I would like for us to get back to the old Double Oak that it was when I moved in here and where neighbors really take care of each other. And, and I think we do still have a lot of that. I think that's, that's there, but we've got to unearth it again and get past some of these other items. So, again, I'm very sorry for what I said during that meeting back, back in September of last year that we're bringing it up again. Sorry.
Jean, anything this evening?
No comments.
That, Public Works, Brandon?
We're going to actually be covering quite a bit in the later meeting, but as of right now, we actually have a huge uptick right now in permits despite the winter storm that we actually just had occurring. But we continue to see that positive efforts from all the homeowners, but regardless of the current circumstances, economic-wise, Double Oak seems to be very blessed in that area. So, we are here to serve you and to continue to provide information. I will state, though, if you definitely ever have any questions regarding permits, we still get stuff from time to time when we are driving the town, taking a look where people are not aware of permits that are required. If you ever have questions, please reach out to our department, Public Works Department, so that we can answer those questions, so that way you don't find yourself in a place where we're pulling up and then people have anxiety regarding whether or not if they were supposed to pull a permit or not. We're also here to make sure to facilitate between the contractor and the homeowner to make sure that they're doing the appropriate work and that they're following the guidelines and regulations, and it's for your safety. So if you ever have any questions, please definitely reach out to us. We're happy.
Correct. Thank you. Code of Course bound, draw, leave a channel, control report, in the thing. Under Code of Course, I will tell you that there's just been a number of ban at times that I run the town, and then staff is going around to collect those, a little behind with ICE on the roadways and all, but we're getting some of those up. So, thank you, Brandon.
Can we get up the Waken Road and the?
That's going to be on.
Okay.
Right?
We're reading on mail. We're on the same page, so.
We're, no, we had something. We got Waken Road on here for another day. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
We weren't going to get this drive, just curious.
Yep.
Thank you.
Bless you. All right, administration.
Okay. We have, still have some alternate openings on the PNC and the VOA. Right now, we have three open positions on the VOA and three on the PNC. So, anyone that's interested, starting on either one of them, just send them my way and give them an application.
I believe the town's on Santa Communication on that this week.
Yes, we will.
About openings on the boards.
Also, we've had three candidate packets picked up. One has been returned, so we have one that's filed. So we have less than two weeks before the deadline, which is February 17 at 5:00 P.M.
Scott, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, public safety, I'll start with fire department. Chief Wilson up.
Reports included in the general packet today.
Chief, we'll just say, on behalf of all of us, to you and the police department, Chief Rivas, thank y'all for your work during the ICE event, and we greatly appreciate you guys being available and callouts, and then go and help the residents of both towns. So thank you. Thank both your departments for us. Chief Rivas.
Yes, Mayor, I want to thank you for that moment of silence to recognize our two officers. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you for that. Quick update on HR. We today gave a conditional job offer for the detective position, so that individual started two weeks or less. Still have an opening for a police officer. We're waiting for one individual to turn in his background package to get started on that, and we'll see how that goes. All the other officers are doing pretty good out there. Just quick update, highlights, and calls for service. Officer Henderson was dispatched to a suspicious person going mailbox to mailbox. They thought there was still mail, so Officer Henderson was able to locate this individual, and they were just a solicitor putting business cards in each mailbox. Officer Henderson ran a criminal check on him, and he came back with a felony warrant out of the U.S. Marshals Office, so he was arrested and taken in. February 5, about 5:00 A.M., while Officer Housman was patrolling at 5:00 A.M. in the morning, going down Cross Timbridge, there's a vehicle parked in the middle of the road. She turned on the light, they're not moving. She gets out of vehicle, makes contact, sees that vehicle is running, and the driver is passed out at the front seat. She made several attempts to wake him up. After several attempts, he finally woke up. He thought he was in White County. He was intoxicated and arrested for DWI, second time for him. Officer Yorgas and Corporal Lance Webber made a traffic stop on an individual who found a good amount of marijuana, which stunk up the city hall for a few days. And the individual also had multiple warrants out for his arrest. Just a couple of highlights, just to give you some information on what's going on since January 1st.
Good, thanks, Chief. Great job.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Trying.
You're doing awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
So Chief, just so everyone knows, so with the, once the detective starts, how many openings do we still have then?
One police officer position.
One police officer position.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, very good. Anything else, Chief?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Roden Greenwich Committee, I saw Mr. Garrett here, anything tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, council, let's go to new business. We have a good friend here this evening, number, item number eight, receiving an update on the Bronx development. Our good friend, Ms. Salvastion, is here, and she is the director of real estate of the Bronx.
Yes.
Is that correct? You'll just introduce yourself and welcome and good seeing you.
Oh, it's nice to see you too. Thanks for having me. Sorry I'm late. I'm the director of real estate for Bronx Ice Cream. As you guys can tell, we laid the slab and also the access drives for the new store. I guess because of distribution issues, rising cost of construction, and now inflation, Mr. Brom just put a hold on three of the properties in the North Texas area, Double Oak being one, and then two in North Richland Hills. We are going to move forward, and we'll have the store open, excuse me, open and operating by February 2024. So we will be picking back up.
Patrick.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I was the one that requested. Citizens are excited. Bronx is a great restaurant. It's a great establishment. A lot of folks enjoy it. I know my family enjoys it, so the purpose for the update was really just to continue to keep the town excited. We understand some of the market conditions you're facing, but Double Oak is ready when you are.
Oh, thank you. And one of the other issues that we've had, I don't think that it's just Bronx, but we've had issues also getting folks to come in and work. And so, with purchasing a property and then spending X amount of dollars opening, you want to be able to put your best foot forward, you know, with the community, give them good service, great product.
Will the site still remain the same? Nothing's changed with the design?
Oh, no. No. We're excited.
Well, we're all excited as well. We appreciate the update.
Oh, thank you. Good to see you.
Council, questions or comments from you guys?
We just want to be one of the top two that gets moved there first.
Oh, well, this, Mr. Brom loves his location. I think when we saw it, was it maybe three years ago, right away, we loved it. So, we're excited.
Any citizens have questions or comments? Other than we're all eager for Bronx, right?
We're hungry.
Yeah. So, hell, I know we've been working on this a long time together. It's many years now, going back to when you guys were originally looking to purchase the property and all, so.
Exactly.
We're excited about the update, and Patrick has to get this on and give us an update here, so we kind of know where things are going, so.
And we appreciate Double Oak. I mean, you guys have been great to deal with since day one with all of the meetings. We appreciate it.
I've enjoyed just driving the other towns and attending some of the grand openings. I'll, I'll call or text Ellen and say, hey, I'm in Grand Texas right now at the opening here. Do you see what?
It was a great opening, too.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a long one for a Hebler.
Yeah. All right, Ellen, if there's anything else, we appreciate you.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you for taking time to come this evening.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Give the Bronx family hello for us. Our council, we'll move to item number nine. That's exciting news. We were hopeful this time next year, then, on Long. Very good. Item number nine, Discussion and Conservation Action on a Resolution Establishing the Fund Balance Policies Along Town Treasurer Bill Garrett.
Yes, we have to do, this resolution is really just to solidify what we talked about in the last meeting, just to formalize the fund balances. We've already given them to Carl, and they are in the audit report, but this is really just to formalize what we talked about when we decided on it the last company.
Billy, you have those. Do you want to just run through them real quick?
I can.
Please.
So for, we have $150,000 in the town contingency fund. We created a new fund for the 50th anniversary fund, and we placed $10,000 in there. We have $100,000 in the Stormwater Structures Fund, another $150,000 in the Road Contingency Fund, $190,000 in the Denton County Bond Project Fund, $100,000 in the Town Hall Technology Fund, $25,000 for the TCEQ MS4 five-year report, $450,000 in Streets and Drainage, $110,000 in Police Vehicle, and $40,000 in the Police Body Cameras Project Fund.
And the only one I really want to touch upon is the TCEQ MS4. That is, that is a requirement, obviously, by the state upon the town. The annual report is generally about $5,000 to $7,000, I think. The five-year report is generally $25,000 to $30,000. And then our engineers checked and said yes. So that's, just want to make everybody aware of that while we have that account as well to try to help on the fiscal year budget when that comes up, so. Okay. Billy, anything else, or council was entertaining a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So I think my only comment is there's a typo in the date that we're adopting the resolution, and that's just carried over from '22, so it'll be '23, so that would be my only, my only change.
Good, with a correction of the year. Catch your eye. Okay.
I'm glad that we accept the fund, is it called?
Resolution.
Well, it's Fund Resolution for the year 2023, as presented in the article.
I second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as presented with a correction to the year. Any comments or questions? Eric, huh? I think we call real quicks.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Shonred.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Wizinham.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Council. Let's go. All right, item number 10, Mr. Carl, is Discussion and Conservation Action on Fiscal Year 21, 22, audit report, and we're honored to have our town auditor, Carl Deaton, here. And Carl, Billy is going to put it up on the big screen as well. We did send it out to community and put it on the website as well, so everyone can look at it, and Carl, you jump around some when you give it, and Billy will do her best to try to keep up with you a little bit.
I hear we're trying to catch up quickly.
Let me get it queued up here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. These are the audit financial statements for the last fiscal year ending June, September 30, 2022. Billy, I want you to go to the independent office report, and I'll just remind you that getting of this report is an auditor report letter. Basically, first of all, reminds you that these are your financial statements, so not likely, you simply engage just as auditors to come in and to perform audit procedures on them, to be able to express an opinion that these papers present fairly of a financial position, the results of operations of the town for this last fiscal year. And we have basically put them into a format that is in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles you can see in the support. So, I'm going to start on page 20.
Or if you would, make sure that light is on. This is capital. This is capital. Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right, so page 20, the left column there, most of the dollars of the town are accounted for through the general fund, and you'll see a summary of the types of revenue and expenditure told by department of what was received and spent this last year as revenue and expenditures. Bottom line of that column, you have a $176,000 increase in your fund balance this last year from the beginning, fund balance of 2.2 million to an ending of 2.387.
And Billy, are you, Carl, sorry. Billy, are you able to kind of put the cursor where Carl touches on some of the, so Billy like the 176 and all the other? Thank you.
So I need to touch on these fund balance designations that you did. You know, a year ago, you did the same thing. You adopted the fund balance resolution. You earmarked part of the fund balance as things that you identified as future needs that you might need to spend some fund balance dollars on. Well, during this last year, some of those needs came up, and you spent money on some things that you identified a year ago. Well, in your accounting system, when you spent those dollars, they weren't coded or posted to expenditure accounts, they were posted directly against the beginning fund balance. And so, the financial statements, I know you saw on September 30, showed like a $500,000 excess last year. Well, that's true, you had a $500,000 excess there, but you had also spent $300,000 plus things that you identified to come out of fund balance. Well, proper accounting procedures say, when you spend that money that you identified to spend out of fund balance, you don't charge that against fund balance. You actually need to budget for those as expenditures in the year you're spending it, and they will be shown as expenditures in that year. And so that's what I've done in this report. I basically pulled that $300,000, which were for streets, police vehicle, and some other things, pulled those out of the, where they were posted to fund balance, and I put them into the expenditures. I have the same bottom line as you had in your records, in that you, you were still coming up in your records with a, in the fund balance of around 2.3 million dollars. I'm just happy to show it a different way, which is really a correct way or more proper way according to generally accepted accounting principles. So, in that 2.1 million dollars of expenditures, the 2.114 last year, is the 300,000 plus that you spent on one primary big road project this last year, on the police car, and some other things that you identified a year ago pay out of fund balance. Well, because you had fund balance to do it, even paying those things quote out of fund balance, you still had an increase in your fund balance this last year of $176,000. So, I've had lengthy discussions with Billy and with the mayor and with Eileen about this year, those things you just adopted as fund balance earmarks for needs that might come up this year. When you, when those things come up and you're able to spend some money on things that you identified, like if the TCEQ report comes up this year, that needs to be budgeted, you need to adopt an amendment to your budget to budget for the spending of that money in this '22, '23 current fiscal year. So, I, I think everybody in the town understands now that I've talked to Eileen, the mayor, Billy's treasurer, how that needs to be accounted for, so that during the year, the financial statements that you get will reflect in expenditures every dollar that you've spent, and there won't be some things that have been coded as directly spent out of fund balance. The, the purpose of those fund balance earmarks is just to let, let you know and let the citizens know that, yeah, you've got 2.3 million dollars fund balance, but we've got some needs, we've got some future needs that we know are going to come up or we think are going to come up, and this is likely what we'll spend some of that 2.3 million dollars on. Because that's one of the purposes of having what is really a healthy fund balance, a very healthy fund balance, is you'll have things come up like a big road project, but you don't have just normal revenue in a particular year to cover that. Fund balances there cover things like that to some extent, but when you spend that money, it does need to be budgeted and recorded as expenditure in the year you spent. And so, that's why you're seeing a $176,000 bottom line rather than maybe a $500,000 bottom line that was in your last interim financial statement as of September 30. So, the end result is you've got 2.3 million dollars fund balance, which is really about where you thought you were anyway, and that is close to 15 months' worth of last year spent, so that is a very healthy fund balance. Even when you carve out the 1.3 million dollars of fund balance earmarks that you just approved in that resolution, you still have that six months' worth of earmarked assigned fund balance, which is a healthy fund balance as well. And as Billy said, I've got those fund balance designations or remarks that you just approved showing in the audit report as well back in page 29. So, it's there as public record, you know, everybody who looks at the audit report as well, as far as the things you've identified that are likely going to be coming up in the future as. as things that you have to spend money on. The bottom line, the the general fund is is in really healthy shape. If you turn back to page eighteen, page eighteen shows the other side of the general fund, the assets and the liabilities, and at the bottom, that same two million three hundred eighty-seven thousand fund balance. I just want to draw your attention from the top, basically, all of that fund balance is funds that you have in the bank. You you've got two point six million dollars of funds on hand at September thirtieth as a town. And the rest, the the basically the the liabilities that uh the receivables, the liabilities on pretty much cancel themselves out. All right, so uh the general fund does not account for all the dollars of the town. There's this middle column of page eighteen, and also on page twenty-two, I would direct you back to page twenty-two, where you'll see the additional dollars of the town that run through uh page, I'm sorry, page twenty, Billy, sorry. There are additional dollars that run through what are called special revenue funds. Basically, this this these funds account for dollars that are already earmarked for a particular purpose the minute they come to the door, and so they don't need to become linked with the general fund, which is primarily just money that kind of been that you as a town budgeted for and have discretion as to how to spend and whether to spend it at all. So Billy, we're going to go all the way back to page fifty-four. Page fifty-four, fifty-five are all of the funds accounted for special revenue funds, and you can see the titles on that first ten. Every time you collect a court citation, there are court technology fees and court security fees to collect. Those are restricted for those particular purposes, so a separate plan accounts for how much was received and how much was spent. The one that's the toughest to spend is court security, there's only so much you can do for court security, and so that fund has built up to a fairly large amount. Court technology is easier to spend with um computer hardware, software subscriptions, you know, for court software, stuff like that. Um page fifty-five has other funds, and on page fifty-five is where you'll see that the SLFRA funds are not being co-begable with the general fund, they are being accounted for separately, so that you can see basically what was received, what was spent this last year, and what was still on hand at September thirtieth, which uh and just remind you, you've received two payments of SLFRA funds, both of around three hundred eighty thousand dollars. One year before last, the other one toward the end of this fiscal year that you're seeing here. Uh so you see the revenue coming in there as a grant, uh just about all of that three seventy-seven still available at September thirtieth. The child safety fund there on page fifty-five, those are, most of that are child safety fees that come from Dent County. That, those are used to pay the school crossing guard that you uh have this uh on the payroll. All right, so you can see a lot of funds here that, again, don't run through the general fund, but come into the town and are accounted for separately. Um page over to uh page fifty-eight, Billy, just want to point out, going back to the general fund, there are four pages here, and hopefully you saw uh either in the electronic copy of the report you got or appear as well, that give you the more detail on the general fund, because again, that page twenty just shows summary totals for revenues that came in, departmental expenditure totals. Page fifty-eight is a is a more detailed breakdown of the types of revenue you receive, what you budgeted to receive, and also a comparison of that same revenue to the uh to the prior year, so that you can see basically what got, what's gone up, what's gone down. First, the sales tax revenue was fifty thousand dollars more this last year than the previous year, and it continues to grow. And pages fifty-nine to sixty-one is the same sort of comparison to budget, comparison to the prior year of all of the expenditures. And again, just to point out, going back to our fund balance discussion, on page sixty, Billy, um under streets and drainage, road repair and drainage, again, you see I've got two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars there. I've had to pull into that total the street work that was done that was charged against the fund balance. So that that's the only reason that shows over budget is because you, again, you didn't budget for that because you thought it was appropriate to charge it to the fund balance. But again, any anything like that that comes up, again, need to approve a budget amendment so that there will be budget dollars there to uh to show the spending against. All right, and then just a couple more things I want to point out, page, while we're back here, page sixty-two. Um something I see on a regular basis, this is the summary of the property tax levy and collection activity this last year. Uh town double oak has very few delinquent property taxes, that column cumulatively only ten thousand dollars going back uh several years are owed to the town. One point at the beginning of the year, one point two million was assessed, over one point two million was collected, nineteen thousand dollars owed at the end of the year. Um the uh, you know, the Dent County, they write off personal property taxes after ten years. Y'all have very little personal property assessed anyway. Real property taxes were never written off, so there are no, there are no folks in town double oak going back prior to twenty-eleven that has not paid their uh their real, their property taxes on their property, their real property. Uh some individuals owe ten dollars for those first four years, but. All right, and then the last thing I want to point out, Billy, is on page forty-five. This is the eighth year in a row we've had to disclose a lot of detail about the town in the audit report about the town's dislocation in TMRS. And uh it's kind of difficult, uh this is a double-wide page, and only one page on the screen, but uh on page forty-five, I'll just I'll just show you about three-fourths of the way down the page, you see a a bracketed number of six thousand five seventy-five. You you as a town no longer have a net pension liability uh with the with the state as far as TMRS. You flip to where you have a net pension asset, you have more assets down there being held by TMRS than the actuarially computed liability of all the future retirement uh payments that are going to be paid to retired employees down the road. So the the bottom, the number right below that negative, we're telling you you're one hundred point five two percent funded in the year. So it's the first time, at least in the last eight years, we've had to record this sort of information, that you've been fully funded as a town, which is excellent. I don't have any as a town, but I feel that is in that particular situation, so.
Carl, let me just speak to that real quickly. So normally, you you can see the trend, we're usually ninety-five, ninety-six range, somewhere around there, but we're we're, all this, and Carl, correct me if I say this wrong, but we're really just dependent on the returns of the investments that TMRS does. And uh we've had some bleak years where their returns were not very good, and uh I believe they had good returns this past year.
Well, their their return is that number about halfway down that last column, a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. They they earned a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars on your one point two million dollars of the of your town's money that they have, so that they are number of ten percent return this last year. So so, you know, this could flip back into a liability this next year, you know, but even at that, I mean, you're still very well funded. Uh I just came from another town meeting before I came here, their reports, they're they're ninety percent funded. So, you know, and they'd have to work their way up to get that high. I've got another town that is kicking in additional dollars on top of their retired, their required contributions, because they've fallen below eighty percent funded. So, you know, it's just, there's more than just the earnings that go into it, but that is a big part. A lot of it has to do with with how much you're paying in, what the what what your rate is, uh what your planned provisions are as far as providing for employees when they retire. But but your town's TMRS is in a very, very good situation here as of and and what these numbers are, these are twelve thirty-one, twenty-one numbers. You know, TMRS is a calendar year entity, so as of the end of September twenty twenty-two, the December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one numbers were the last ones they had published. And so these numbers are a year old. Uh the ones as of the end of twenty-two won't come out for a while until they do their audit and actuality. But just want to point out, actually, that's good news, and again, towns have been in that situation before, so. All right, so that's kind of what I wanted to go over. Uh if you had any questions about anything, or if I've kind of confused you with the fund balance explanation and visiting and all that, I'd be happy to try to answer questions.
I think the biggest takeaway from that is uh going forward, as Carl said, it it's great that we are able, we've been able this last several years, fiscal years, to set money aside on the balance sheet, on the fund balance, and that's the purpose is to uh for some of the expectations down the road, when the prior year we had a surplus, set that money aside, just make sure that we expense that in the fiscal year when we're spending it, and that's just what we need to make sure that we're doing, so, yeah.
Oh, Carl, one question. So we use QuickBooks as an amusement in a municipality. Is that the best system to reflect what we do? It's been brought up before about we reflect P and L statements, which are more business oriented. Are we using a proper tool in our town? Would there be something easier to do the offsets of the general fund expenditures against the budget? Do you have any suggestions or comments on that?
You know, there are, there are several fund accounting packages out there. I I've got one of the town that uses QuickBooks, that's about your size. I've got some other towns that use a fund accounting package. There are some fund account packages that are just, I think, terrible out there that uh are really difficult to get from me to get information out of to build audit. Um if you decide to switch, I would like to at least be able to offer my opinion as to which ones I think are good and which ones are, but I think QuickBooks works fine for you. Um, you know, basically, these special revenue fund accounts, you're using liability accounts to account for it, so which is one way, which is basically the way to do them in QuickBooks, because now QuickBooks is not a fund accounting package. So when you've got these special revenue funds and these funds like the court security funds and court technology funds that you need to keep track of separate, well, liability account is the way to do it, you know, because the balance in that account will always be the balance you're seeing that I'm showing based on fund, based on how much it's been. I think, I don't think your town is going to grow to the point that QuickBooks won't work for you if you decided to switch to a fund accounting package. I mean, I I wouldn't say that's a bad idea at all. I I would just say that there are a couple of bad packages out there, in my opinion, and but there are there are a couple of good ones out there too, and I, you know, I'd like to at least speak, ask my opinion.
Sure.
If I'm going to continue to audit it, which one's good and which one's bad.
So if I could appreciate that.
Good question.
If I could just clarify, since I'm not an accounting person, what you're telling us is is that when we make financial commitments to use funds out of these, the reserves that we need to do an actual, have a motion by the council to do an amendment to the budget.
Correct.
To use those funds to bring them back in.
Correct.
To the budget.
Correct, you bring them out of the balance into your current year budget.
Okay, I just, that really helps, because I've been kind of wondering, since I'm still in my first year in the council, we've talked about that, but exactly how it got accomplished was a little bit of a mystery to me, so that clarifies it, thank you.
I'm sure we should see it being recorded that way this time next year.
Well, what it does is
I know it's what to do now.
It enables us to budget without raising taxes, because we've got the funds available.
Yeah.
But then we bring it back in, which shows us spending and excess of what we had in the budget, we have the funds available, so we're really still in financially good shape.
Yes, yes, yes.
Uh audience members, any questions? Uh the council's saying there was some questions, anything from you guys this time? Yes, sir.
When I pull money out of my 401K, it really dings me hard on the taxes, like, is this, is this like going to a slush fund, or is this money that we can just use it well when we need it for things like emergencies, like road work that comes up?
Well, the the fund balance is there to, for the council to decide to decide what to use it on, if anything. I I would always stand up here and tell you that you need to have a minimum of three months' worth of spending in fund balance. And if you've got more than that, then I think you've got some some basically excess reserve that if a need comes up, like a a street project or something, and you don't have the current year revenue, you know, to to use to spend on it, then you've got fund balance there to build and spend on. And that's what was done this last year. I don't remember the name of the road that was done this last year, but it was
It was double oak's drive.
It was two, it was a two or three hundred thousand dollar road project. You know, the normal sales tax and property tax revenues, you can't pay for that in the whole year. So you build a fund balance so that then you can draw it down and pay for a big road project or for these TCEQ five-year reports, you know, and things like that. So, yeah, I would never call it a slush fund, I would call it basically
I'd be leaning in the right direction.
I would basically call it, you know, a healthy reserve that's there to meet one-time needs.
I view it kind of like a savings account, like you save them for, a little different than your 401K, right? Because the 401K hasn't been taxed on you individually, so when you pull it out, that's the tax that you're talking about, right?
I worked in restaurants for years, and you always had, we never called it the slush fund, but it covered for basic things. But I I was just saying, if there's like penalties or something, we can.
Like a savings account for, instead of planning for future projects, that's sort of the thing, or or just being prepared for the unexpected.
True, I mean, of course, I mean, you save money out if you want to take that for a car, because you can't just pay for it out of your paycheck, you know, so it's the same way. That's what that's what fund balance is on in towns, is to save up for a big need that might come up.
Especially since we don't have any debt. I've tried to assume we're taking no debt to that point.
Money every time you do something, and you've been responsible enough to not done that.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just amazed you have no debt, but you've been responsible enough to use fund balance, build up fund balance and use it for things that other towns go out and borrow money to do.
Does anything else?
Uh great way to describe what that was. I think it really helped everybody. Um I know it's got me thinking, um we've all had great discussions about. Um we still have some challenges with roads in the in in our town, as we will discuss a little bit later. Um so I think it gives us some some good food for thought as it relates to how we can maybe expedite some things and still be in that way of having that three to five months of protection, so.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Uh would someone like to make a motion to approve, accept the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two audit report?
I would, I move that the council accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two audit report as presented by our auditor.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Anything else from the audience? Eileen, we call her over please.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Wizner.
Aye.
Ms. Sean Redd.
Epstein.
That's all.
Epstein.
All right, uh thank you, Carl. Carl, would you mind hanging around for a few minutes? We've got two gen items, comprehensive drainage study and also an asphalt road thing that we have a a question about funds, we might want to keep your brain first.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, counsel, if you will indulge me here, and let's go to item number fourteen uh real quick. Steve, if you want to come up, uh item fourteen is to receive an update on the Wakeville Road Bridge construction project. Follow Steve and Randall.
Good evening. My name is Steve Kunkler. I'm a town engineer. And we're getting close on Wakeston Road. If it wasn't for the weather, I think we'd already be done. Weather and supply issues as well. Where we stand right now is we're still waiting for railing to be on site, for them to install on the headwalls, anywhere we have drop-offs. I heard something about the, the center cones that are still down the center of the roadway. They are actually ready, the contractor is ready to, to strike. There are a few things that he has to do. One, the weather has to be just right. It can't be wet, can't be cold, or it just can't be freezing. And so he is waiting for the weather to calm down a little bit. The second thing is, he's actually going to go out there and market before he actually stripes so that we, myself, I go out there, verify exactly how the plans are so that we don't have any striping out there that he has to grind off, looks bad or anything like that. So he's going to market with temporary paint. And he's coordinating with both town, the farm out and us for a date. It was supposed to be last, actually this week. But with the freeze and with the rains, it's probably going to be next week before he's out there and marking everything. The second thing that he still has left to do is signs. We do have signs already up in the double portion. There are some signs missing, speed limit signs, I've heard. That's because kind of farm out is freezing up. If they're actually on their pay limits and we come to a demarcation line on the plans, and they're supposed to be putting those up next week. I can verify with them, we have a construction meeting on Wednesday, and I can verify when that day is going to be. So with that, we're hoping to have a final walkthrough at the end of the month. And the final walkthrough is where myself, the inspector, the contractor, we've walked the entire project. We look for deficiencies. We look for things that weren't necessarily correct, that they need to go out there and fix. Some of the things that are actually already on that list are the, the ramp over there on King's Road. We've asked them to bring in more soil and make that. Not so much of a drop-off in the back of the ramp, they haven't done that yet. That is on the, that is on the list to do. Mailbox, town hall's mailbox is another thing. If you remember correctly, they damaged the original mailbox. It's my understanding that the town wants a, the standard mailbox back. So in lieu of putting a mailbox, I think the town is asking them for a payment for that mailbox so that y'all can use it how y'all want to. And then.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, I think Randall and Ryan's staff are looking at a lock mailbox, more secure mailbox and that type of stuff. And I'm just quite right, so, yeah.
And so there's other items too. So if you know of anything, you want to email Randall, email myself, anything that you see or have questions about, we can add that to the punch list and give the contractor to fix it if it's, if it needs to be fixed.
I think the fire department is happy to have all the parking area back. All the temporary mailboxes and orange cones are gone. So that's good, that's good. Thank you for working on that, Randall and Steve. So, like Steve said, there are a number of things that Randall and Steve have on their punch list already. Some have been checked off, many have not yet, so they're staying on that, so.
I have a question on signs. On the roundabout, is that double oak jurisdiction, is that Flower Mound, or are we joined?
It's Flower Mound, so.
So do you know if they're going to put roundabout signs at our roundabout? Because there was a fatal accident on Dixon, Union Chapel. So we will get direction signs?
Absolutely. You get the direction signs as you approach. It shows a roundabout sign in advance. And you also get Chevron signs that you see as you approach in the, in the center aisle that say go right, so that direct the traffic.
On all four streets?
On all four streets.
Good. Thank you.
Randall, anything to add?
No, so far everything's been excellent as far as working with the contractor. And Steve has helped facilitate a lot of stuff. We do have things on the list, as stated earlier, that the contractor is aware of. We've sent numerous emails just to make sure that we have documentation. For those items, they are aware. And when we do the final walkthrough, those things will be broached as far as those things being corrected, so. The mailbox will come at a future date. We are looking at a more sturdier version, something similar to what fire department has, but a lock box version, so we're able to receive packages even when town hall's not open. For some reason, if something needed to be delivered, it would be locked up and it wouldn't be accessible to just the regular public, so.
Very good. Anything else? Anything from the audience? All right, Steve, go ahead. Complete that item then on Wakeston Road. No further action on the item 14. All right, item 15, discussion consideration action on presentation, overview and funding for a town comprehensive drainage study. Follow Steve and Randall again.
Okay. The last time we had met, we had, y'all had asked a few questions, so I wanted to go ahead and address those questions first before we move forward. One of the questions was, is there a more recent LiDAR source than Teneres 2019? And, and the answer to that is no, there's not anything available at this point that is free to us. One of the other questions was, how much will LiDAR cost for the entire town if we wanted to go that route? Preliminary numbers, it looks like there's two different levels of LiDAR. There is a survey type of LiDAR which things are within a couple of inches as far as vertically and horizontally. And that will run about $63,000 to do the entire town. There is a GIS level which is, does not have that much of a tolerance. So things can be a little bit off, but it's what people use in order to do large drainage studies. And that is right around $40,000 to get that data. The other question was, was, what is the latest FEMA data that we have? And the last study was performed in 1998, 1989. And there was performed a MAPMA in 2011. So what that means is, there wasn't another study that was done. They just received additional information as far as LiDAR and how the contours looked. And so they, they remapped the elevations, the contours based off of that new LiDAR information. So there was not another study done. Those were the three questions I would ask. Going back to the comprehensive drainage plan, I think one of the things that we were talking about was whether or not we wanted to move forward with the, with proceeding with the comprehensive drainage plan. Y'all wanted to know the LiDAR data to know if it was worth the town getting new data. In my opinion, I would say it's not, because this is more of a, of a planning tool. And once you decide what the plan is and you decide on projects, then that's when you would spend money to get a survey to look at the detailed design. So you're spending money right where, exactly where you need to based on the project that you decided with. One of the other things, the questions that was, that was brought up was, is this an interactive model? In other words, can you update this model? We had brought to you what is called a RAS model. Scott clearly articulated that a RAS model is more of an open drainage flow. So it looks at drainage channels, ditches, stuff like that, to pinpoint where there are issues with drainage. And it does not look at storm drain systems. So if you have a network, like we do on Wakeston Road now, where you have curb and gutter, the water goes into the curb and that's into a system and outfalls into a drainage system or a drainage easement ditch, it does not look at that. It cannot analyze that. We do have another model, another method that we can incorporate that into, and there's not much more to do that. So if the town wants to go with a different model, one that you can update, you can look at. So let's just say we come in and the town makes an improvement on a roadway that has a storm drain system. We can actually put that in the model and we can see how that impacts the upstream in there.
Ms. Wallen, you've signed up to speak about this.
Yeah.
Welcome. Identify yourself, please. Pat, if you'll identify yourself, welcome.
Okay. I am Pat Wallen, 144 Spark Drive. And so my question really for you, and I'll maybe talk about this if I can find anywhere my notes or any ground presentation. Will the plan take into account the changes that Flower Mound is planning on Lust Lane and some of the downstream? So that that will be taken into account when you're looking at what our drainage problems are?
So, so yes, we will take into account what happens downstream. It, it depends really on what is available to us. So in other words, if they have a model that we can bring into our model, then that is something that's easily done, we can do that. If there's not a model, then that will be a lot more work for us to have to recreate something. And generally, improvements. We would have to look at that and look at, at the moment, what, what we can get from the town of Flower Mound. That's the.
That's what I was considering. We presented on that, I didn't have to work with them.
We do, we do, and they share information, so that would not be a huge.
So I think that's a great question. Part of that is, I believe Flower Mound will be looking, having some modeling effects done. And Pat, one of the examples of that is the Wakeston Road project. When we were looking at the flow of the water, one of the things we asked Flower Mound to look at with us as a partner was could they accommodate more water going through the intersection with the new infrastructure that they built on that side? And the answer was yes. And so that's part of kind of what you're asking about, but yeah, yeah.
And my second one is your earlier request for counsel. I request that the stormwater utility fee rate evaluation, this $1,000,850, which was submitted for consideration, not be included in this contract and should not be conducted until after the council and the drainage committee have had time to digest the information from the study of the 10 hotspots identified and the council has time to consider funding sources. And if an SWU fee is necessary, bring it before the residents for input and consideration before any action is taken. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak at this time from the audience? All right, Steve, go ahead. We'll give the audience another chance here. You can keep going, Steve.
And there was one more question that was brought up that I forgot about. And that was, was there public involvement that was in the scope of the work? And there was not public involvement. So that can easily be added into. We can talk to y'all about how you want to go about, how many meetings and how you want to do that. And we can add that to, to the proposal.
So Steve, for everyone's benefit, so this drainage study, comprehensive drainage study, does it encompass the entire town? Talk a little bit more about that. And is it just along the roadways? Or are you actually kind of looking at overhead view down on properties and the tributaries that eventually flow south or north or wherever they may drain to?
Right. So what it does is, it actually, it's a plan. You get to see it from the top, top down. And so you get to see it in real time. You know, when water flows, it takes time to reach a certain point. And when it reaches a certain point, it accumulates, it can accumulate, it can spread out. That's what this model shows you is, over time, in a normal flood event and even a 100-year flood event, what happens with that water? Where does it go? And when it gets to a certain point where it's restricted, what happens to that water? Does it move upstream? Does it stay within the channel? Does it flow overbank and go outside the channel and potentially impact others?
But so you do in the entire town?
It is the entire town.
Okay, I want to make sure everybody understands that, the entire town.
To add on that though, how much area around the town do you add?
We don't add around the area. So the LiDAR equation that we will get is for the entire town. So let me rephrase what I'm saying. We encompass your entire drainage area. Whatever is coming into double oak, we look at and we pull that LiDAR information into it and pull the, pull the contours so that we know where the water's coming from. In the case of toll roads, where, where things have changed, right? We would not ask, in my opinion, but I would suggest is, we wouldn't ask for y'all to go get LiDAR of that information. That doesn't look good. But what we would do is go get the plans from the municipality and model their detention facility and have that come in as a point source, because that's what's happening now. This is a point source right there. And we would take that information and bring it into our model right there. So it's a lot less expensive to do that than this to actually get the LiDAR information and run it through, it'd be easier for us to analyze what they already have and place it into a model as a purpose structure.
So question on that, because you said you used their plan. Does that mean that it would be okay to use that at this time to gather that information? Or is this something where we would need to wait until they finish the building? I guess it's based on the plan, it's okay that we're doing it before they're finished?
Yes, absolutely. Because their plan was.
Took into account.
Took into account, they all have it done.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I was understanding.
Good question.
And I also have a question. So I was going to ask about the SWU fee as well. Because I agree, I think, general feedback from town and citizens was that that wasn't something we were really interested in. Is it something that could be analyzed later? If there was, you know, like as Ms. Wallen said, you know, to, maybe if it's something to be thought about later, just to keep that in the back of our minds? It's not something that has to be analyzed right now, is that correct?
Absolutely. It does not have to be analyzed right now. Or if you take it out of the script of work, it does not encounter that.
Okay. This idea of our town is different than a lot of the towns that are shown as examples. So it's probably not something. Okay, thank you.
I think we'd have to find a way to bill it, since we don't have a municipal water supply. So that is the beginning of the achievement or the challenge of actually implementing something like that.
Completely agree. I don't want to implement it. I was thinking more just, is it something that really needs to be done at the same time if you're going to do the analysis? Because I agree, I don't really think that we need that. And there's, you're right, a lot of challenges for billing and all that. I think it's probably, one, it's not really a revenue stream that I've ever felt like we needed. I think most citizens would agree with that. And then it might just be more headache than the, than the small amount it might bring in.
It would depend on what the recommendation was and what, out of the drainage study and an ongoing basis, the town felt that they needed. Patrick mentioned that the last meeting when this came up, that it's a tax, which it is. Which is when, why, when this was presented to Rose and Drainage last fall, nobody on the committee that I can recall that was present at that meeting was even mildly attracted to that for that very reason. It's like, it's Rose and Drainage, and if we need the funds for something specific, that would be addressed with the council as a proposed project. And the council would decide how they want to fund it. But it's appropriate that you brought it up so that everybody's aware of that as an option that at some point in time in the future may be relevant.
And as I referenced at the last meeting, I'm living it right now, our business. I'll keep everybody posted on how it progresses.
We can live vicariously.
And I think a lot of times where I've seen it used, it was more associated with commercial properties, which we have very little of.
They actually did the whole town. I, I.
Yeah.
I, I blew me away when they did that, because I was, if you look at the socioeconomics of Lake Dallas, which is Double Oak, it's significantly different. I mean, to put that tax out there. I mean, just as a small business, you know, it's impactful. But you can't bite City Hall, it's done. So it's just a matter of monitoring it and learning from it, so.
One thing that I will remind everybody about regarding this, and the reason this was actually brought forward was because of the fact that we have been over a decade without actual comprehensive study. And what that truly means, and, and the reason why we're proposing this, is because there's been a lot of improvements that have been made through the years. The Hickory being one of the things that adversely affects our, our community, as well as the other developments that have gone on. We do have some fairly new projects that have taken place in houses that have been developed. Taylor Oaks, Thornhill Estates. There's a lot of this that occurs. It doesn't mean that we haven't done studies on an individual basis, based off of concerns that have come up. Those have been done, but as far as the town as a whole, we've never really seen what that data looks like at this time. And so we need to take a look at that. It would be, it would be impactful for us so that we know future dollars being spent, where we would like to put those at. Ultimately, because at that point, then we have the data analytics to go, okay, this is where we're really getting a lot of our issues, and this is where it's actually coming from. Right now, we don't know where they're coming from. We'd be paying for a study that would be an isolated view as opposed to an overall view. And that's where this comes into play.
Well, and to tie into that, since I sit on Rose and Drainage and I'm still learning, it would make sense to be aware of that, because as we work on road projects and bring those up, it may make sense to title them and say, as long as we're doing this, for example, there's probably going to be some along Waiton. That would tie into the Waiton Road project. So the extent that we can know where they are, or we can plan maybe more efficiently as opposed to, geez, we just did an overlay and now we got to tear it up and do this. So we can avoid doing that kind of thing. I just hate seeing a road get freshly paved and then torn up.
I have a question, go back to the statements earlier about the, the lightar. In terms of, you, you made a recommendation that maybe not be necessary. And we do it at, at a moment in time. If we were to do it for the town, would that give us any information that could point us or lead us to a direction that, hey, we're not really seeing it over there? But look at this, and maybe we should pay attention to it?
I honestly don't think you're going to get much difference between that data and the data that you provide.
Right, thank you. Just one more question.
I have a question. So on the project fee example that you gave us at the last meeting, the total was $70,149 with the SWU rate valuation credit, which I think I agree with, Ms. Parsons is not interested in that tax. So that takes it down to $63,164. Thank you. So if you have to collaborate with Flowermount on the Lusk and Kings, is there additional cost to us? And also, I'm wondering, the interactive kind of appeal is, I'm wondering, because we have drainage issues that will be resident responsibility, and then there's going to be stuff that the town should take care of. Is there going to be any distinction when you come up with this diagram and show it to us? Where whether it's color quoted to, this is the responsibility of the town of Double Oak, that you're going to have to take the lead and fix this? And these are things where homeowner responsibility is going to come into play? And it'll be clearly illustrated for all of us to understand?
Yeah, we will be able to identify where the problem is. We'll be able to identify where the choke points are, okay? So when it comes to drainage out of roadway, underneath the street, alongside hard edges, we'll, we'll be able to look at that and go, okay, it's spreading out here, and it's spreading out because we have a culvert that is undersized here. And look, it's impacting, it's spreading out, so it's impacting neighbors' yards. With this as well, you'll be able to see where things or where areas are not drained properly outside of those areas as well. So you'll be able to see yards that may show water coning and everything else. And we'll identify that as a, as an issue that is not the town's issue. So you'll be able to look at it, and we can tell you, this is happening off property, off-site. It's not a town issue. Or this is happening out of roadway where the town needs to address it.
And what I forgot to ask also, is the, the town meetings, which I think are important to hold. So is there a charge for town meeting? And do you usually entertain like two or three before projects begin? What's your recommendation?
Yes. So yes, so we, we would have to include that into the scope of work. Generally, you have, you have two meetings. And then you have a third meeting. So you have two that gives people the opportunity to come in and get your hook. And then the third is, this is what we have found. And this is, this is, these are the, the areas that we find that we have hotspots or problems that need to be fixed. So that's what I would recommend, is that when we come back and give you a proposal for this, you go ahead and update it. We put in there town meetings, public meetings are there. And we can put that as a per item. So let's just say we put in three, and you only use two. We don't, we don't charge you for that, that one, right? I would also say that, I'll go back to my engineer and say, okay, if we need to go ahead and collaborate with Flowermount, add their stuff in, is that extra? So I will verify that, so.
And also Toll Brothers, if you're not to take their plans?
Yes.
If there's costs there?
There will be costs associated with that, I don't know. But it, it won't be a lot. So what I will do is, upon your approval then, I will go back to, to the office, put together a new proposal that has collaboration with the town of Flowermount, adding in Toll Brothers, and then as well as public meetings. And then taking out the, the.
SWU.
SWU. We'll take that out as well. And we have a clean copy and a clean, uh, app for scope of.
Correct.
And can you include your model references?
Model differences?
Yes, including two models.
Sure.
Yes. I want to know that interactive versus the statement.
And, and just to, just to be fair on that, they're both interactive. One of them just is more of a modeling that takes into town drainage ditches and does not handle storm drainage systems?
Right.
Okay. And so the other one, so I will be your price for both of those.
You suggested like two different ones.
Yes, just two. Sure. And I can clean how we can vote on one or the other, not have to pull back from the other.
Yes, great idea.
Those would be signified as more detailed in the actual, in the actual plan, correct? As far as what's being, what, what, what each one represents?
Those are two different names. So we'll, we'll put those names out there and give a description of what the difference is.
Thank you.
Yeah. It sounds like that was the only difference we want to see is those two lines.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, so anything else from anybody at this time? We'll come back before we close this up, give it a chance. So Carl, while you're still here, we're talking about money. And so this, this study we're looking at, I'll say generally is looking $63,000 to $70,000. It's been on what we come back with, and maybe more than that, depending on what we come back with. Obviously, we know we have money on the fund balance sheet and in the bank and everything else. Another source of money, just, just asking, and I'll say the only next agenda item, the SLFRF money for drainage projects. And we'll talk about road construction later, but it's a regular governmental expense. I would presume, if council wants to, combination of fund balance money and look to offset with the FRF money, whatever. That would be available funding for us if we chose?
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the final rule and the Q and A's vote to address water and sewer infrastructure costs as something that's commonly allowed with that question. I would be SLFRF.
And that's just, I, I just want to ask a question while everybody's here, that, so we all kind of be on the same page with, with, if we're looking at different sources of funding and stuff, so, okay.
So on that thing, Mayor, when we put the agenda item in, do we need a predecessor agenda item to amend the budget to add the funds? As Mr. Deaton was explaining earlier?
Or would we do that as part of the, of the, the actual motion?
Can you do both in one?
Well, yeah, that's, that's the question.
Carl, I'll take that question forward, say, I'll get them to repeat it.
I asked the mayor, not the.
The question board, do you have to have like a separate motion?
Yeah, procedurally, how do we do that correctly?
Well, I mean, you, when you approve an expenditure, you can log at the same time in conjunction with it, approve a budget amendment to cover those.
Okay. So in one, in one pass, we could say, we're going to do this drainage study using funds from SLFRF bucket, if you will, and therefore amend the budget to reflect that. If it were something.
Yep. Of course, the SLFRF are not budgeted, but.
But we would be, we would be bringing that money into the budget.
Yeah.
Not, we would. So it's really different.
It's just, it's just your general fund, fund balance dollars.
Okay, so the SLFRF would be different?
It's different.
Okay.
That's why it's on a separate page in the other report. It's on a separate account in the QuickBooks. Yeah, and it's, it's not required to be budgeted. You're simply required to follow the rules, just the ones you can spend that money on.
Okay.
But when you spend that money, you don't have to budget.
Okay.
Yeah, but when we, I'm anticipating we will move forward with this. So in minutes, we would want to reflect the use of SLFRF funding for this project.
Correct, correct.
And then that fund would get divided by that amount when the expenditure was made.
Just so that everybody's clear, according to what we have right here in the general fund, currently the storm, just for information purposes, the Stormwater Structures Fund is currently at $100,000. Just so that everybody knows what we do. Yeah, so.
So I guess the purpose of my question was, was to make sure that we word the agenda item appropriately to handle all the necessary changes that we made if we're going to adopt it.
Agreed. Thank you.
Good questions, and that's why we asked Carl the study. So thank you, Carl. Okay, while Carl's still here, we have, so again, we're generally looking $70,000, give or take on this. We know some sources of rep, of money sources, funding sources. Any other questions about paying for this while we still have Carl here? Obviously, we're going to take this up at the next meeting. So Steve, you're going to work on the things you addressed tonight and come back with a, a new plan.
Yes, sir.
We like the top end being that $70,000. Top end.
We'll try.
So includes, and so covered again, includes a couple of meetings, talking with some other entities. And obviously, we understand, you know, you guys have calls for me to go do these things. Make sure you include all those things. And anything else on the audience on this item? Anything else from council?
No, thank you. Thank you for your patience with our questions.
Anything from here on your end?
No, I'm good. I do, I did want to mention, though, now that you're saying that. I know that we keep talking about Flowermount's participation in the Lusk. We are going to have a meeting in the next two meetings. I believe it either will be on the next meeting or be the following meeting. Flowermount's already had discussions with us, they're coming and presenting their idea for the Lusk and Kings Road. So in honor of that spirit that we're talking about that, please know that that is coming forward. We've already had several discussions with them regarding that project.
I think you previously mentioned it. And they're, we're, we'll come look and see if Double Oak will be a financial participant.
Absolutely.
And that's, uh, let's be clear, so.
Yes.
And we have no idea what kind of dollars are coming out.
No, and that's exactly why they need to come and talk to us.
Okay. Steve, anything else on this subject? Council one last time?
Thank you.
Okay. Don't go anywhere, Steve. All right. We're going to bring this item back. An item back to consider funding at the next meeting for the comprehensive drainage study. We're going to go to item number 16 now. Discussion, consideration, action on fiscal year 2022, 2023. Mill and Overlay project been authorized. Town engineer proceed with the bid process. And Steve, ten quarter, man.
Long awaited roads. I'll let you take it on the first initial part, but I do want to remind everybody that we do have forward with the addition of the intersection here at Kings. It's still in this package, so do remember that that is a, a part of it. We have to decide whether or not we want to include that or not. We'll state that Steve and I have had discussions, you know. You do get a discount, even though it's a smaller portion. We have a project as big as this, as many roads as we're looking at, whether or not we'll decide to move forward with that. Whenever you have something as small as this, you do get some additional, uh, what you call almost like a discount, because it's being thrown in with the rest of it.
Economy scale.
Yeah. So just wanted to mention that.
So last month, when we had, had that, there was discussion on what budget the town was wanting to spend on, on roadways. We had identified and put together a, a plan set for, for four different project areas. That being Shady Oaks and Kings Road as one project. We had added the Altman's at the time, which is Park Lane, Timber View Drive, and Meadow Knoll. And the total budget that, or engineers estimate for those four projects was roughly $780,000 to, to come in, do base repairs in areas that needed to have, where payment failures were currently happening. And they also come in and mill two inches of asphalt off and put two inches of asphalt back on to the roadway. That estimate was roughly $780,000. I know that y'all were going to look at with this audit update, how much y'all wanted to spend for a total project, knowing that there is economy scale. And so if, and kind of that's where we stand right now. The order of priority that was brought up by Rose and Drainage was the Shady Oaks project was top of priority.
Okay, go slow, let me see. Shaden?
Shady Oaks was priority number one. Priority number two was Park Lane.
Right, hold on. Shady Oaks and Park Lane.
Priority three is Timber Lane.
Yeah, I can read those.
What was it?
Timber View Drive.
Okay, and when, but Shady Oaks and Park Lane were going to be designated as the primaries. What's the other word?
Priorities.
Add to the Altman's. And Meadow Knoll Drive was the fourth, and that was the lowest of those four projects on priority. And then looking at the budget, we had four. Shady Oaks and Kings. Kings is in this estimate, that was roughly $212,000 for that work. And then for Park Lane, that was $177,000 roughly for that work. So the question that we had the council is, what budget do y'all want to set for this next project?
As I recall, at the last meeting, you mentioned that these were rough estimates and that potentially if we did three or four of these, we might actually get more for our money, because they're going to be bringing equipment and, again, the size of the project. So a couple of things, I'm, I kind of lean back to the old stitch in time thing.
Okay.
I, I'm just concerned that if, if we put some of these. I'm just concerned that if if we put some of these Timber View and Meadow Knoll off, that we might have more degradation, and eventually, when we get to those, it will cost more to repair them because dirt moves, we have weather, and stuff erodes and decays. So I guess to the extent possible, I would like to see us use the money from last year's budget that didn't get used, just due to timing, this year's money, and then I would I would, my mind says, use any remaining funds in the SLFRF to tackle Timber View and possibly Meadow Knoll, to get those done before we wait and have to spend more money. So I don't know where anybody else is at, but that's kind of where where mine heads up. And I'm kind of thinking, luckily, if we, there'd be slightly less than $300,000 left in SLFRF if we spent about 70 on a drainage study. So we could maybe get close, depending on, you know, what a price for doing all four would be. And I'm just pulling that out of the top of my head, but I've been thinking about it a lot since the last meeting. I pulled this engineer's quote that you had out of that that meeting agenda and just looking at it, and I just I just kind of hate to wait. And as others have said or commented to me, why are we sitting on the money? You know, what are we waiting for? I mean, this is this is this is town money, and this is a legitimate town expense and obligation to our citizens to maintain the roads to drainage.
I'm going to see if Eric Garrett, here for somewhere.
Yes.
Would you mind coming up to the best or the podium and just kind of giving some of your thoughts on this?
Eric Garrett, 120 Trinity North Drive. First off, I'm excited about the fact that we're talking about it. And hopefully, we're of the same mindset, we're we're going to proceed and make a decision. As far as the priorities are concerned, the Shady Oaks project is number one because it's the last project or the last street in the northwest part of Double Oak and has not been done. That's the original surface, or was remaining the original surface of that front street. But admittedly, it's not a big street, it's not a lot of traffic, but surprisingly, there's more traffic than you'd really realize over a period of time. And it needs to be done to make coherent with all the other streets that have been addressed. It's also a drainage issue, Grant Ward was protesting, because the water coming down from Shady Oaks comes down Shady Oaks and comes into that spillway and the backside going down toward Rancho Vista. And I think our neighbor, Ms. Moffett, would like to comment on that from a personal perspective as she lives on it. But let's get her down. I mean, as far as the allocation of funding, the SRO, I guess, R O funds, et cetera, the citizens are going to benefit from that, and that's what that money is targeted for. So again, I support it. Gary Goodman couldn't be here tonight. He wanted me to echo his comments, being that this is what needs to be done to the benefit of the town. And so appreciate what you're doing this early in the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moffett? Ms. Moffett, would you please step up for voting? Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Moffett, 140 Shady Oaks Lane, number one. Whenever we have a lot of rain, looking in the cul-de-sac, the water rises because the ditch, because the donuts in, that it's filled in, and so it rises and it comes all the way up to my driveway. So Grant Ward, who's our fire marshal, there, the whole driveway is under water, Dave Battleton, it comes up there, and that team now has like a little retention on. But the reason I bring this up is that I would not want to have the money spent on a new overlay, and then all of a sudden, we've got all of this water because everything's been pushed into the dirt, and then we lose and have to go back and do it all over again. And in walking, you can see where the water line comes up and about where a lot of the degradation happens. So just just to make sure that we don't spend money twice.
Thank you. Good comment.
So I wanted to know.
Well, in the last meeting, I thought we had talked about Shady Oaks and Kings, maybe being that do the three and include this if we have the Kings and LUSK conversation and we know what's happening there, and then we also have the drainage study. And I thought it was like we wanted to pursue the other three. No, and then add in, negotiation wise, the intent for the fourth road and being Shady Oaks and Kings. Did I remember that right?
I didn't remember it that way. I do remember the last time you said that Shady Oaks would be the original and priority. Yeah, I knew what you were thinking.
I could be linking it, yeah, because of the LUSK and Kings.
Well, see, I think this is Kings Drive of Wington. This is not Kings and LUSK.
That's why.
A little lot of intersection there.
I am totally excited about the economy scale discount. I I love that. So I'm totally, I'm forward to do all of these roads. Would you have a suggestion about, because you're involved with both our drains drainage study requests and these, if there's a way we should be doing one before the other, or to make sure we don't negatively impact and spend twice? Are you are you watching out for this this way?
So very good question, a very good thing to think about in all this. So so what a mill overlay is, is purely maintenance. We are not looking at drainage improvements because we're not looking at causing drainage issues. We're we're taking down the amount of asphalt, we're putting back the amount of asphalt back in the history. It's purely a maintenance thing. So we're not looking at drainage, we're not we're not looking at culvert improvements unless we know that the culvert itself is rusted out and pureated and just needs to be replaced. We're not looking at sizing drainage structures, so there's no drainage analysis being done on these things. And the roadside ditches as well, we're not looking at that because, again, this is just purely a a maintenance project. That being said, if there are issues that where you need to put a pipe in, you need to do a drainage study, you're talking about a minimal, small portion of the road that you would need to reconstruct in order to put another pipe in. I doubt very seriously that you would be doing a ton of work where you're talking about reconstructing, you know, 200-foot of roadway in order to put a structure. It is more of excavate, putting your pipe in, laying the asphalt on top. So you're not talking about a huge amount of additional work. Now, that being said, if you know, if you could, and you could wait, and you could do your drainage studying, but there's always going to be those if, if, ifs. And so honestly, if you go and you move forward, you're not going to spend a lot of money if you have to come back and put a culvert in, it's not going to cost you that much.
And that should be covered by the 10% contingency, our lead in the projection.
The culvert itself?
If you came across it.
Yes, if we came across the fact that there was a culvert that was, you know, deteriorating and needed to be replaced, yes, that's in there.
And so I have a similar question about the timing because I hate to have kind of analysis paralysis where we say, oh, we don't decide on roads because we're doing the the drainage study because I feel that way, too. Like, I agree, I don't want to do anything twice, Ms. Moffett. But that does make me feel a lot better because the drainage study, if we go with that, which I know that's a separate discussion, but remind me, the timing was, I think, about six or seven months on that?
Yes.
Before we even got really results. And so we could get to the end of the year again and not have roads done. And so, yeah, I think.
We can't.
We can't do it.
Yes, we shouldn't.
But I think it's a valid point and a really good point to discuss, and it does make me feel better thinking about, okay, if if we needed to replace a culvert or something to help with those drainage issues on Shady Oaks, it wouldn't be a major change.
And I believe you, and I'm not holding you to the, but you had referenced that if we packaged these together, that you would be here for a set amount of weeks getting it done, not once in terms of all the mill overlay.
That's right. You know, you you can almost imagine if everything went right, right? About a week per project, a week week per street. So knowing that everything doesn't go right, I would anticipate about a week and a half to two weeks per street. And so you're looking at about six weeks, eight weeks for them to be out there doing this work. And and really, and the reason why I say that is all depends on the contract you get, how they want to approach it, how we want to allow them to approach it. The contractor may want to come out there, mill every single roadway, and the town goes, I don't want you to mill every single roadway, so I don't want every single roadway to be exposed for three weeks for four years. These are things that that we would be stipulating and talking about, but.
And and what you mentioned before, is if we did all of these together, the mobilization fees that are there would be reduced because they're only bringing the equipment in one time. So we have, well, we've got four because there's one for each road. Yeah, so we have about $60,000 in mobilization fees. So you're looking at shrinking that by how much?
Don't know. Generally.
50%?
Generally, they they charge about 10% mobilization. So you you can see that if it's a percentage, it may not reduce much because we're looking at the full percentage of the project.
Hey, guys, I would just caution, it is, you don't know what the bids will come in at. You just you decide on the roads you want to do, the amount of funding generally that you're comfortable with doing, and then let the bids roll, let's say, roll in.
Right. You you will see savings. I I just can't sit there and say, you're going to see this much reduced mobilization. But you will see a cost reduction because they don't have to have all their equipment come back and forth and leave, right? So one-time mobilization, and the fact that that they are, it's a production crew now with with the milling machine, they go from one street to another street and come back from asphalt crew and do that, you're going to see a lot of reduction in cost on that. But for me, sitting there and saying, you know, your mobilizations would go from 10% to 8%, I can't.
But you can put the S in.
That's actually what we love to dance, because that works.
If 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 my job is really to give you a proper number where you have money to cover everything, and you I'm not having to cut back before you go, we need more money for this project, right? So what I'm going to give you, I want to give it to you high so that when we give a contractor a bid, it's actually lower than I gave you.
Can I can you remind me, on each of these streets, there's two contingencies. There's the miscellaneous construction contingency and then a 10% contingency. Can you remind me what the differences? I feel like we might have discussed it last meeting, but I just I can't remember where it was.
So as we get closer to the bids, I take away the 10% contingency. That's for budgeting purposes because right now it's so volatile. The prices go up and down, I don't know where it's going to stand, so I put that 10% in there. The the line item miscellaneous construction contingency, that is actually for you you uncover a pipe out there with a crush and we need to do that, it's there, it's covered.
Got you. Thank you.
Other question for chief. Obviously, there's always a concern with the equipment and these roads have been identified. This will benefit the when we have to dispatch the fire equipment?
Yes. The problem, it's not going to make the road wider, but it will fix any of the shoulder areas that have that have collapsed, and then our back gillies might block the road, which is a bad thing on the fire truck because it tends to tip over.
Well, some of these have, based on the, I'll call it engineering drawings in the last council meeting packet, actually showed where we need some work under the underlayment. So that's going to fix that, too. Because if we don't fix those, just the mill overlay itself isn't going to result in a problem. That's why I really, you know, I agree with Kai. I think, you know, if we can get get more for our money by doing all of these, it also would prevent continued erosion and problems with the base where there are problems. If we can stop it sooner, otherwise, we wait and there's, it's it's probably going to grow. It's not going to stop where it is. So in a way, we're saving, we're saving some money if we can get at it now, if we can feel comfortable making the commitment.
So council and and Steve, so my, so Shady Oaks would be the entire length of Shady Oaks from what's that, Oakview all the way down through the cul-de-sac where?
That's great.
Grant Ward and the Battleton, Ms. Moffett and more. The length of Park Lane from Kings to Double Oaks Drive?
Correct.
Okay, that includes, council spoke with.
David White.
David White. David White about his ditch and everything prior to this. Is this including that work?
This is for the minimum repair.
This is for the minimum repair.
Which is, that would be correct. It's just so there's clarity, because I I see what you're saying and where we're at. This is just for the minimum repair, just to bring it back into compliance enough to do the to do the road, not coming in and doing a full-on repair of the drainage area as far as into the private property side of it. It's just to bring the bring the drainage area back into the appropriate grade, and then that's it.
Right. So so if you look at at the roadway in that area, you have a pretty steep drop off.
My question is, this includes the work that's previously been talked about?
What it includes, and I just want to be clear, what includes is, we are going to fix the the roadway in that area because the base is filled.
Right.
So we're fixing the roadway, we're coming back with soil, and compacting the soil up alongside that and putting grass in there in order to stabilize that ground. But we're not coming back with any kind of concrete riprock.
Right.
You know, that's.
Yeah. We're doing what was agreed to at the meeting.
Yes, yes.
That's one of us.
You're right, he's just making sure that he covers.
You're on the same page.
Timber View.
Yes.
Is that from across Timbers all the way back to the cul-de-sac?
That is.
Okay. Meadow Knoll is from Wington here at the intersection going back to Valley View or?
It is.
Should go past.
How far back past that?
250 feet, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's up at.
Make sure we're all.
It says the owner's name, because I went and walked it to see which house that was.
Okay. So it's a couple of houses past Valley View, no?
Yes, it is. I'm trying to get there, sorry.
Okay. So that's all right, just kind of generally the view.
It is right past 220 Meadow Knoll. It is right before Moby's Park.
Yes, okay, it's Moby's, okay, all right. The only thing additional comment I would have is, I would not do this intersection up here at this time. Kings Road is in the future Dade County bond election. That's going to go all the way from Charlotte, Macon, all the way to this intersection. When they strike this road, they're going to strike these crosswalks. I I would not, these are, this intersection is drivable, I don't see an issue with it. Now, I'm speaking for me, I would not do that at that time, at this time with this. When they do Kings Road, if we want to continue through the intersection, you know, go back a little bit way down to the town and work with that contractor at that time. What I would say is, down here at LUSK Lane, going west on Kings Road, before you get to around the Victory neighborhood there, there is significant crack and failure there that I think I would put into this bid package, I'd say it's maybe not the length of this room, but it is probably half of having that repaired and then some spot repairs. Don't know Kings while we have the equipment here, but again, that would be patching to extend the life of Kings until the bond project takes place, which we do not know when that would be. But but there is a big failure. But, but there is a big failure crack section that I think we need to get addressed when we do this work. It's if you're past Lust and before you get to the Victory neighborhood.
So, it's eastbound from on...
It's going westbound.
Oh, going west from Lust.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, Billy in the Treasury, we have last year's road funds and this year's road funds. Do we have this $700,000, $80,366, and maybe a little bit more covered? Say eighty, say eight hundred thousand?
Oh, if you'll come up too, we can get some information from Paul and Bill if you don't mind.
Just, just so we know what we're planning to use.
Yeah, so I, we have $200,000 budgeted current year. We've got $450 in the funding balance. Road contingencies has $150, but really they kind of save that for emergencies, covert, things like that. And then you've got your SLFRF that you can send. You've got $650 in current year budget plus the fund balance. And then you've got your $377 in the SLFRF that you can do.
Eighty is $700,000 on the drainage project and then we're down about $300,000 of SLR.
Yeah, I think it's just the, the council getting together, getting a little bit creative on where your, who the problems from. And so that we don't care where they run balance. And I think it's all totally doable. I'm on board with the rest of the council. To definitely move forward and get this done at one time.
So, we're looking at, if I'm reading the rules here, maybe requesting a bid on all four of these minus the Kings piece out here, but looking at, at the other Kings from Lust West that the mayor asked.
Do we need to wait to figure out what that Kings piece is though before moving on to the next step for the bid? Because we have no idea.
Yes.
We need, we need a revised, well, I mean, the mill overlay just reflect. Can we, this conversation, can you do that?
Can we ask for the Kings to be a additive? And that way... That way we can move forward without it. And if it's, if we can find the budgeting for it, we can add it, but we don't have to wait two more weeks to...
Excellent suggestion. And it might end up being an emergency.
Well, if we have another hot summer, I mean, last year was...
I don't want to question it anymore.
What I expect will happen on the Kings repair down here is they will go through with the mill machine. They'll need to mill up a section of that and then come back and patch it. So, generally, that's why I'm saying it'll probably be about $50,000, but I don't, I don't know. That's just a guess.
Yeah, I don't know, know the cost. One thing I do want to point out is that it will take additional time for me, for our firm to do the work, to draft it out, to put everything out on paper. And I will need your approval to have scope to be able to do that as well and feed. So, I don't know what your timeframe is, when you want to do this, but I will definitely need approval from y'all to add that. And I can give you a scope and feed to do that and do that by tomorrow. Shouldn't be too much. And I can let you know how I will take.
So, do we add it now?
So, we could, we could, and I'm asking this in a motion, approve what's on this, the four roads minus Kings out here, plus the new Kings part, for him to go ahead and do that so that we, he can bring it back here and then we can let bids. Is that what we're talking about?
No, he's talking about the actual engineering preparation package that we have already approved. That he needs more money for that.
And it would delay it, right?
That's correct.
Well, can we look at this as a separate item? Not delay it. And I would, I would venture to suggest we add in Brown Cliff Court since he's, but then in the notes that that's pretty, a recommended reconstruction. And so, let's just start looking at that to be forward-thinking about what to do. Because if I lived on that street, I'd want us to be looking at that too.
Oh, you mean add it into like his engineering scope package for the Kings repair?
Yes, I would. I would suggest that, I mean, if they're going to do more work. Because like I said, if I lived on Brown Cliff Court, why would one is looking at that road?
If I may suggest, I can give you two different calls for those that way. If you need to do a turnaround, but yes, we do Kings.
Okay.
Any questions on the other one, I, it won't delay.
That would be great.
Yeah, I think it's great that we're trying to do it all in one, but if we, if we go ahead and make an approval based upon a set amount, if the scope changes at all, we can bring it back to council, discuss it. If we have to subtract or change something, we just bring it up as a separate motion or separate agenda item. This way, we can get things moving down the road, as Scott had said, so that we're not waiting another two weeks. I would love to see us get through this, get a plan in place so that we can make these things happen. I think the citizens, even though they're going to be a little bit, you know, put out why we do the work, I think you're really going to see a benefit to it, so. Let's not kick it down the road. We don't have to. We can always make changes. The council, because we brought the council, we discussed, we can make the appropriate changes.
Correct, once we see the bid, that can change up.
So, I would move.
So, Steve, one last time. So, on the bid preparation, what are you, what is your understanding right now for the bid preparation? What will roads be listed as primary and then additives?
So, my understanding at this point is that, that Shady Oaks, Kings Road here will be taken out. We'll have Park Lane, Timber View Drive and Meadow Knoll all the in the base bid. And I would move forward with Kings Road in the area that you talked about, Mayor, as an act of all.
No, we want Shady Oaks in. Just take the Kings Road piece of that. Kings Drive at Wakeston, take that piece out. So, just do Shady Oaks. We want Shady Oaks.
The Kings Road at Wakeston will be taken out. This Kings Road that Mayor, that I may talk about, which was west of... Lust will be an additive.
My suggestion would be, we'll drive Kings and take up the full, the full length just to, you know, when we have the crews here, we'll go ahead and drop some asphalt and make the repairs that are necessary, knowing eventually it's going to get tore up anyway. But that section between Lust and Victory probably is going to stand out to me right now. Patched, so.
Okay, so the next step is going to bid, so. Maybe, I don't know what to say in the motion.
We need to move up to, approve the, the list of roads, which is Shady Oaks minus Kings Drive at Wakeston, Park Lane, Timber View and Meadow Knoll as proposed with an addendum of Kings Road as Lust West. As a possibility, but he needs to go ahead and get the engineering on that. So, that's a possible add, depending on what that comes back as.
Does that cover the bases?
That's the motion.
Does that allow us to move?
Yeah, that basically empowers him to go ahead and get the engineering work done on Kings because that's the only piece that we're missing without holding this up.
And can we also put in a, not to exceed the $780,365 that is here?
We're just getting bid.
We're just getting bid. We, this, so we have to go with the business. We're just, we're, we're saying we want to get bids on all of these to see what they come in and see if by the very size of this project, we can, what, what the discounts, what we might be able to get to that kind of money.
It's in that motion, then we're approving the additional engineering fees for Kings.
Since we're adding that on at Lust West. Because that's not...
Would, withdraw your motion if you would?
I will withdraw my motion.
So, on Kings, again, it's my recommendation, engineering drives the full length of Kings. As I said, that one spot area is, I think, needs to be repaired. All of you can go take a look this week at it. But you might see something else on Kings as well. I don't think anything as major as that. But I do want to drop Kings and whether have the crews here to drop the asphalt. So, I guess my suggested motion to y'all would be to approve, authorize in the 2023 Mill and Overlay Project move forward and authorize the town engineer proceed, proceed with the bid process for as presented by the town engineer in Shady Oaks, Park Lane, Timber View, Meadow Knoll as presented, and repairs as designated on Kings Road by the town engineer and associated engineering fees.
Isn't that what she said?
That's what I meant to say, but none of those exact words. So, if I might, I would just piggyback on that or I could restate it. Basically, that would be the motion that I had in mind for the council so that we can move forward and not delay this another whole cycle. I would second that.
Okay, I'm going to motion by Jean. Second by Con. And my only thing was, was to drop the full length of Kings and let the engineer decide where some spot treatments may be needed, so.
And, and I appreciate the, you know, the specifications so that we really, everybody's with.
Questions or comments? Okay, so we all understand, Steve's going, with your Kings Road, with Randall, you want to prepare the bid and you're going out for advertising and bidding. Is that correct?
Here's my question for you. For the council is, in order for me to include Kings Road and make it onto this project, I need to have approved scope and fee to do that. I don't know if I'll get that from you before you want this thing bid. So, here, here's something we can always do. We can go with this project, we can bid it as is and we can add that.
Later.
Yes, after, after it's been awarded, we can add that as a contract and give instructions. And that gives plenty of time for me to work the drawings and have that ready.
So, you're saying drop the Kings Road off and just have the four streets?
I'm saying for bidding purpose, so that we can let this project, let's do that. On a separate case, I will give you a scope and fee to do plans for Kings Road to a point where I can add it to this project. And if it happens that we can add it, will it still be in bid? Great. If not, we'll, we'll award the project and then ask them to give us the price for Kings Road this year of the plans.
Okay, I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion.
Right, so that, and just give a new motion. Jean?
Okay, let's try this again. And I love this group thing. So, I move that we proceed with the Double O 2022 Mill and Overlay Project as provided in the January 19th council meeting that includes Shady Oaks minus Kings Drive at Wakeston, Park Lane, Timber View and Meadow Knoll as, as proposed to go out to bid. And then in addition, that we approve the engineering work that needs to be done. Down stating. Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, we have a motion and a second. Authorize town engineer bid on Shady Oaks, Park Lane, Timber View, Meadow Knoll as presented. Counsel, any more questions or comments?
Just timing, once it's out to bid, when are we going to get excited about our new road?
So, the bidding process will take about four weeks once we advertise it. And then it will take probably another four weeks before construction starts. So, you're talking about two months.
And, and remember, that's what we talked about early on a couple of months ago is, is try to go out for how, what we're doing tonight in February or March. So, this council is on schedule, what we agreed we wanted to do. Be baby here in the warmer months, so, yes.
We get a thumbs up from the back.
Now, we hope we do lots of bids. And then, but Connie asked about the process. So, they'll advertise, they'll get all the bids in. So, prior to that though, talk about your pre-meeting.
Sure. So, during, during the bidding process, we always have a pre-did. It's, it's a non-mandatory pre-did meeting held here at the council chambers in which we invite the, the contractors to come and to listen to our project and ask any questions that they may have for that project. And it gives them an opportunity to ask questions and have an even thinking. So, in other words, whatever questions they ask, we write it down. Then we answer it in an addendum that we post, so all the contractors can see the questions and what the town response is going to be for that. Once, less than a week after that pre-did meeting is when the, the bid openings occur. And so, Eileen will get all the bids in here. Generally, it's about two o'clock on a certain day. We'll come in here, we'll open up all the bids. We'll read off the bids, make sure they have all the bid bonds and everything they, they need paperwork-wise in there. And read all the bids. And then we'll go back to our office and one of my staff will review the bids and make sure that they are accurate. That there's no typos, there's nothing that says, "We're going to charge $10 a, $100 a square foot to do something, but the cost didn't reflect that." So, when they come back and they go, "No, we said $100." We make sure that their bids are good and they're in line with what they should be. We look, we look for that to make sure that there's no errors, that, that the contractor's not picking up on something that we might have missed and so they're taking advantage of the town. So, we look at all the bids that way. Then the lowest bidder, if everything's right, if everything's there, then we'll call all the references that they have, make sure that they're in good standing with, with those references. And they will make a recommendation to the town with the low bidder as well as their cost. And y'all will be able to approve it at that time.
You know, the council is the one that awards the bid as the final step. And I will be clear, we do not get involved in this bidding thing. It's a very legal matter. These companies, you know, are helping to get the jobs and we stay out of the bidding process just so that's clear to everybody. Engineers handle all that stuff, so.
And, and we tend to, there's a list of contractors that have done the work for Double O or who have these bid within Double O. We always send them an email saying, "Hey, there's, there's, there's an opportunity coming out. Be, be on the lookout." So, that way, we try to hit at least six or seven different contractors so that we get good, good competitive bids.
All right, thanks, Steve. Anything else, Council? We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Ms. Sherman, red.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Wizner.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Paul, thank you for staying. Help us with this sort of budgetary question. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Council, I want to go to item number 11 now, please. Item number 11 is discussion of the Constitution Act on ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Double O, Texas, ordering a general election to be held on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of electing a mayor and two council members at large, providing for the publication of posthumous notices, providing for early voting, providing for the forming of election administrators and judges, providing severability... and judges, providing separability clause, providing a effective date, town secretary only, intended.
It's just something we have to do. It's an annual thing.
And it looks pretty standard to all other election language of the ordinance.
I think it's the same one you use every year, but you change the dates, yeah, so.
Change the dates.
And I checked the dates were changed.
So is there a motion?
I will move that the town council approve ordinance, um, twenty-three dash zero-one of the town council of Double Oak ordering a general election to be held on May sixth, twenty-twenty-three for the purpose of electing the mayor and two council members-at-large, providing for the publication and posting of notices, providing for early voting, providing for the appointment of elections administrators and judges, providing a separability clause, and providing an effective date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Your second.
Is it? Comments or questions? Eileen, Eileen.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Whiston Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw and Redd.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel, item number twelve, Discussion Consideration Act on Anilocal Agreement Between Denton County and the Town of Double Oak Police and Volunteer Fire Departments for the Use of the Denton County Radio Communication Systems. Uh, either chief have a comment on this, or Eileen?
I have a comment. It's, it, we, we do it every year. Um, what, what it is, is the Denton County Sheriff's Office owns the radio communication equipment. Uh, we own our own radios, but they own the, uh, trunking stations, the transmitters, trunkers, computers, stuff like that, so. Uh, and, and the radio programmers. So what we do is, we, we pay to be, um, on their, just like a cell phone. We pay it for the service, uh, the maintenance of those towers and then so forth. Um, for me, it's free. Um, I don't, because we're volunteer fire department, we don't pay anything, we get our radios on it for free. Uh, PD and, and, uh, and career, um, uh, fire stations have to pay the service, and you see the amounts, and I don't know what tier you're gonna be asking for, chief, the tier one or tier three. Tier three comes with PM of your radios every two years and one year of software updates.
Yeah, so, tier, tier three.
Yeah. Tier one doesn't come with that. You have to pay per radio. And I don't know what the fee is per radio by Denton County.
So you don't, the police department doesn't own the radio?
No, they own the radios, they just have to pay to have them on the trunking system.
What's a PM radio, what's the difference?
Preventive maintenance of the radios. They will, they will, uh, service the, the PD radios. Uh, one radio every two years could be, is, is eligible. I mean, every radio is eligible every two years for preventive maintenance service.
Like anything else, your cell phone, you gotta keep it in working order.
That's correct.
Like David.
And, and sometimes things change, uh, channels are added, uh, uh, police department or fire departments added or moved, combined, uh, so those radio channels will, will change, and then you'll want your code plugs, which is the, the technical term for the programming of the radio itself to, to reflect the current status of the radio, just the radio channels.
And we need it working.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's, it's a must-have, so. Uh, it's not a, uh, astronomical fee, it's like a twelve and a hundred dollars now.
So the amount we're looking at is at the twelve twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, and just a little background on this, uh, years ago when we had meetings with Denton County, um, uh, there were some much higher numbers of this. Uh, if we have a running own dispatch system and all, it's, believe me, it, it's very, very expensive. So, uh, our police department and many others around the county, uh, utilize the computers a lot more. There used to be a lot more radio traffic.
Yes.
And, and that drove up the price. Um, the departments and along with sheriff's department, uh, got, got smarter and utilizing the computers, in, in car computers more, and that helps reduce the price, and, uh, but we used to pay more than this years ago when all this was started. And, um, the twelve twenty more is, is quite a bargain.
It's underneath the two thousand, isn't it?
What's that?
Is it underneath the two thousand, eleven?
And which bucket?
Yeah, but it's in our into an agreement, so. That's what.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha, I was.
Yeah, so which, which tier bucket does it come out of? Um, 'cause subscriptions, it's only two hundred dollars. So is it going to your communications program?
We have a budget here under communications.
Communications is where it goes.
All right, so counsel, is there a motion to approve amount of the, uh, what's presented in the contract agreement?
I move that we approve the contract agreement for interlocal co-op agreement with Denton County Radio on System, um, under tier three for the police department, well, the whole contract, I'm moving that we approve that, but specifically the, the tier three category for the police department for an amount of twelve hundred twenty-four dollars.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion, second to approve the agreement as presented. Any comments or questions? Chief, any take from you?
No.
All right. Eileen, will you call the?
Mr. Whiston.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw and Redd.
Aye.
All right, so good, thank you. Uh, look at that sign up in Denton County. All right, item number thirteen, Discussion Consideration Act on the chairing, on any chairings or tip-toe deposit CD, and I'll call on town treasurer Billy Garrett and Eileen. Counsel, I think it's your desk, item list of documents.
Yes, sir. Eileen got these rates. Um, the current, current balance in our CD at independent financial is two hundred nine thousand six forty-two point eighty-seven. And their current rates for a six month is four percent, eleven month is four point two five percent, and fifteen month is three point eight percent. I would recommend the eleven month at four point two five percent.
Who looks like a brainner, but that would be my recommendation.
Agreed.
I think it's a good recommendation.
I'm hearing unanimous consent here amongst counsel.
So I will move that we, um, move forward with the town treasurer's recommendation to renew the CD at independent financial um, for the eleven-month CD at four point two five percent.
Good second.
I have a motion, uh, in a second to renew, uh, the CD at the rate stated. Comments or questions? Eileen, Eileen.
Ms. Shaw and Redd.
Aye.
Mr. Whiston.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Counsel, I know we have to go back to front page, is there any items on this new business agenda? Or do we get them all?
Uh, we got them all.
Seven of them.
All right, so from the front page, okay. All right, then let's go back to the front page here, um, under consent, uh, we have two items this evening. The first item is Consideration Act on Minutes of January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. Item number two, under consent, is Consideration Act on the Lantana Invoice for the DOPD Bank Awards Banquet. So we have two items under consent this evening, counsel.
I have a question. Um, in looking at the invoice for the, uh, DOPT, DOPD, um, invoice, it's dated December, um, eighteenth, and the resolution, and so this, this is a valid bill that was paid, and the resolution that said it wouldn't be valid without the council vote was the nineteenth. So I think that's relevant since, since it's, unless that was meant to be retroactive, the resolution changed, um, stating that anything over the, the allowed amounts would not be valid without a, a vote of the council. So since that preceded this, the resolution, I don't think that it's necessary. So I would suggest that we remove it from the consent agenda.
I'd move for it to, uh, go to an agenda item to be discussed.
It doesn't need to be anywhere, because it occurred before the change in the resolution requiring anything over two thousand dollars to be approved by the council, either prior or retroactively. Since that occurred, since that expense occurred before the change in the resolution, it's not relevant.
So my concern would be the account used for the funds, and I think it warrants a conversation at council. So I'd like to move to an agenda.
I don't know where else you would take funds for that kind of a recognition of officers. Um, because that's part of what that, where the funds were, the account the funds were used from is for.
Okay, so counsel, uh, there's, there's two items under consent for consideration. We're right now talking about the Lantana Invoice for DOPD Awards Banquet. I put this on the agenda, just for formality for counsel to approve. Uh, the banquet's already been held, um, the bill has been paid. There was a, uh, it, it went slightly over two thousand dollars with, uh, the deposit and the cost of the banquet. Um, I thought I was appropriate to put it on with a combination fee more than two thousand dollars. I think, um, it's a non-controversial item, and that's the reason I put it under consent this evening. Uh, going forward, uh, if counsel chooses in the next fiscal year, when the council, CD council at that time are talking about the, the budget and the different line items, uh, it would be my recommendation that, um, if you wish to make a line item in the budget for the, the DOPD banquet, that council certainly has the right to do that. Any council member can bring that up and do that at that time. For this item here, it'd be my hope and my recommendation, um, that the item be approved this evening, just for formality, has been presented publicly and, uh, for transparency, so. That's my take on this.
And I would just state that I'm, I'm fine with the transparency, and for full transparency, for the last two years in the budget cycle, it has been discussed, um, that the chief and the assistant chief intended the line items that they're taking them out of for some recognition for the officers and to start having a banquet. So I just want that publicly stated, because it was discussed at the time of the budget, and I have. I was, it, it met my expectations of what was discussed, and I'm okay with the formality of, of council proving.
No, I'm saying that this is, for next fiscal year, if the council wants to put it in as a recognized thing in the lineup.
Separate line item, yes, but I, there was one item that was identified in the discussion, uh, to include that, I know. Um, when I've had discussions with.
So counsel, what if we take the item separately? Uh, you want to take item number two now, since we're talking about it? The Lantana Invoice?
Okay, yeah, I was gonna do the whole contention, but.
Well, if, if you just want it there for transparency purposes, my point was from a technical standpoint, the invoice preceded the change in the resolutions, so, um, I'm fine with that.
My only concern was the budget account that it came from, I guess the banquet. Um, recognizing our officers is important to do. It, it came out of the community programs budget, which in my mind, when I think of community programs, is extending to the Double Oak Town community, not just a small portion of people employed by the town. So I'm, I'm envisioning National Line Out or the Coffee with the Cop program, or anything else to envision coming across. Well, we know the idea, so that was my contention with the item.
Well, and my point with that is, is this also included the officers, the families of the officers that we lost last year. So that extended beyond the current force and council members who are in attendance to include the families in recognition, in fact, they lost a loved one. And I would hazard a guess that had we not included them, we wouldn't have exceeded the two thousand dollar amount, so. Um, I think it was certainly the right thing to do. Also, if you reflect on the larger picture, that the community came together and those who felt attracted to the concept made donations to the Double Oak Players Club for those, for those families, um, to recognize that. So to me, this was just an extension of that. We love you, and we haven't forgotten you, and we appreciate your service to the community.
Is there a motion to be made on item number two?
I make a motion that we approve. Item number, I move that we approve, um, the consent agenda, item number two of the Lantana Invoice for the DOPD Awards Banquet.
Have a motion? Second. I'm second by Scott. Eileen, will you call the?
Mr. Johnson.
Obstain.
Mr. Whiston.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw and Redd.
Obstain.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
All right, I will pass this. Next is the item number one, is the Consideration Act on Minutes of January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, I'd like to move for a correction to the minutes in relation to section four, item two, Mayor Council Comment, sentence three, that the word racist should be stricken from the record. It is already noted in the minutes that the reference to the comment was inappropriate and offensive.
I would second that.
It's, I thought it was stated all of the above. Because she's commenting on what Ms. Hillier said, correct?
Well, he's making, he's making a, he's attempting to make a motion to, um, correct the minutes, remove the word racist.
Right, and I'm reading that sentence to say that she's commenting on what Ms. Hillier said, and, and that was a point that Mayor, Mr. Mayor Proton, and this Deputy Mayor Proton, you really wanted those items in there, um, who commented on what? Um, that's been a development in the last several months. So that was what was said.
You don't have to approve that motion. You can, it could be approved a second, but that doesn't mean we have to approve the change in the limits.
It's a valid point, I'm just, yeah, I'm, I'm making a point that
I have.
It is representing what was stated in the meeting, um.
So, upon the investigation that occurred with the town attorney, and I had a discussion with the town attorney, and in a follow-up, he notified me that there was nothing more that needs to be, will be, or can be done. I confirmed this with the mayor. Through the investigation, it has not been determined by any party, including the town attorney, that the statement was at all racist. It has been determined it was inappropriate and offensive, but it has not been proven to be racist. And racist is a very powerful word.
And the comment was very powerful, so it depends on how you interpret it. And I will go back to the point that was made earlier this evening in public comments about one more time rehearsing the issue with Casey's comments. So to me, they're, they're very equivalent in terms of, of fairness, so. That's just my opinion, so. You can, you can recite, check, and verse what the town attorney told you, but that doesn't mean that anybody else in their own personal view of how that came down has to agree.
Yes, agreed, because that does explain why that, that came up at the beginning of this meeting, now, from that conversation. It's, it's all clicking in my brain now.
And actually, you're, you're wrong on that. I do not know that gentleman that's out, who's out there. I do not know him.
I, I'm not saying that at all. There's a lot of things going on underground in Double Oak, um, that I was trying to figure out where the play was coming from, and, and now I get it, um, so.
That did not come from me.
Okay. Enough counsel.
Well, we just.
Enough counsel. Yes, ma'am, if you'll come to the floor, please. Good evening and welcome, and if you'll give us your name, please.
Joanna Meyer, one seventy, Park Lane. Did y'all read the article in the, in the, uh, co-op magazine about Dennyola, where the people that came in from Germany? Did y'all read that little article in there?
I've not yet.
Well, anyway, that's where my family came through, my mom's family. They immigrated from Germany there and settled in Texas. My family has had a, uh, what do you call it, genealogy history. My family is the largest registered family in the state of Texas. My family is the largest registered family in the state of Texas. There's a lot of people in this family, a lot of different nationalities, which I'm very proud of to say, in my family and in my immediate family. And I have a niece-in-law who lives Hispanic. And when I made a comment about something, and because that's the Mexican family that lived in the area that I lived in, from land in South Texas, and she says, you're racist. I'm not racist. Another time, on another time, when I was talking about something, and we were eating lemon cake, and I said, I love white wedding, white cake, why not? Well, you're white, you're, I said, no. This is, this has gotten too far, okay? I know Patrick Johnson. I know that he was joking, just like the mayor was joking last time, when he said he was gonna send us a bill for the work that was done in the bathroom. Y'all all laugh about jokes all the time. Y'all all do crack ups. I know that he didn't mean anything racist about that. Our lawn bill went up. My church's lawn bill went up. I'm gonna joke about that if you want to buy the fruit, say, Biden Lawn War. He's from India. Is that racist? I agree. You did not know what that meant. I looked it up, and I saw that too. I saw what that meant in there, that it was this area of people that were peckers, and it was the poor people all. But you know what? I did not think at that very moment that you were racist for saying that. I thought it had to do with the Howdy Doody thing, and I used to watch Howdy Doody. I'm proud that I watched Howdy Doody, and I'm proud to be a part of the peanut gallery. There was a thing on Facebook recently, and I don't go on Facebook, I just read it. There was a thing that said, we need a department of common sense. And I think that applies to everybody, not just the peanut gallery.
So I would like to, I would like to pay you back on that too, because, um, I don't think, I think we're all asking for healing. I think we're all asking for people to get along. I think we're all asking for the old Double Oak. And if that says we don't throw the racist word around, and we don't accuse people what they're not, then then let's just let bygones be bygones. And I would, I would just say, let's let it go. Let's let the healing start. Somebody has to do it, somewhere, someone. Sorry, go ahead. I see you get your hand up.
Ms. LaBelle, if you'll come up, please, again, for yourself and welcome.
Katie LaBelle, two ten C, of course. All I understand was, if the word was mentioned in the meeting, what you're doing is just approving the minutes. So to strike it is not appropriate. If it got the word was stated in the meeting, that's all. But I agree with everything Joanne just said. This is, this is the nastiness has gotten out of hand, but but in terms of approving the current meeting for the minutes, you don't strike something just because, well, it doesn't sound, it was said, you know. Sorry.
One second, thank you. So counsel, I have a comment, and audience members, I have a comment. I I I wanted to wait till everybody had their counsel say something. Um, it is my recommendation that there be no action on this item tonight on the minutes presented. It is further my recommendation, and I've said this before several times, because sometimes things get said. We videotape and audiotape all of our meetings. If people want to sit or watch these meetings, they can come and get the tape or watch it on video. I've always believed and worked with past council members, my colleagues here on this this dials over the years. We attempted to follow basically what Denton County does. Agenda item, the motion, the second, the vote, and that's it. Um, comments that are made, different things are not registered in the written minutes. Sometimes things get heated. I don't believe it's upon one or two people to decide what goes in the minutes. What's said is said, and that is true, but it is recorded for history on the audiotape and the videotape. Uh, if anybody ever needs it, wants to look at it, listen to it, it's always there. Uh, so counsel, it is my recommendation this evening that we table these minutes. Allow Eileen to go back and do the vermin minutes as she has done in years past, along with this meeting tonight, and we follow what we have done previously, uh, by way of constructing the minutes we presented to the council. And that's my recommendation this evening.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. If you table, that means that you bring the thing back, the subject back up in the same meeting, postpone means to a future meeting, according to Robert's Rules of Order.
Say it again, Jim, now should we do it?
In Robert's Rules of Order, if you want to move something to a future meeting, it's postponed. If you table, that means set it aside,
Okay.
come back to it later in the same meeting, and I'm assuming you're about done for the evening.
You're correct. Let's, my recommendation postponed, then, correct. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm, I'm, I am not going to make that that motion.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable with it. I think, I think, I believe that the minutes say exactly the the topics that I spoke to at the last meeting. And I personally, especially in light of the public comment earlier this evening regarding the formal complaint that's in your hands for Casey Parsons to resign, that stands. To me, they're both equally, they're both, um, they're both equally inappropriate, both have been apologized for, but that doesn't mean that the record in one case is expunged in the other one. It just, it doesn't, in all fairness, it doesn't. It was, it was an ethnic comment, which is racial. And in business today, anywhere, if a if a comment like that is made, even even in jest, which is also unacceptable, you lose your job. I didn't, I didn't ask for the mayor superintendent to resign, as was asked this evening for council member Parsons to resign. I just requested a formal apology, which was made. So in my opinion, that stands. It's my opinion.
Okay, so we have a item consideration action on the minutes of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Recommendation from the mayor, so it is we postpone and allow town secretary to, um, do the minutes as she previously used to do, and, um, similar to what Denton County does. And, uh, that that's my recommendation to the council now. Anybody can make a motion and entertain and take a vote.
I'm probably, I thought there was a motion in the second.
There is a motion in the second on Florida, remove the comment racial, so we have to deal with that at first. The second was.
Okay, so the motion, second, is to strike the word racist.
It's actually racial.
Racial from the minutes. All right, Eileen, will you call the other one?
Sure. Ms. Parsons.
Nay.
Mr. Wizzenhut.
Abstain.
Uh, Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Nay.
Ms. Shonred.
Aye.
So it's a two to two?
Yep.
Do I get the vote?
Yep.
And I vote for the affirmative of the motion. I will repeat, I I'm still giving Eileen direction as the mayor and counsel can have arrived, if you wish to at the next meeting or whatever, uh, but she will be doing the minutes of because Eileen being put under the gun quite a bit. And to help prevent what's going on right now from going on in the future, we need to strictly have the minutes as the business that has conducted the official business of this town and reflected in the minutes. Again, for recording history purposes, it's audiotape and it's videotape. Uh, so we're not losing the history. It's available for anyone to listen to and to observe and and watch, so. All right, um, so did we conclude that?
We haven't dealt with them.
That just was the one line, the word, right?
The word.
Oh, then we have to go back to the the minutes of.
We can, we can make a motion to postpone the minutes.
Well, now we're striking the word.
No, that's.
I know, so now we need to take a vote on the minutes.
Right, so we can make a motion to postpone, just do this, modify the word.
To do, you know, recommendations. Well, even though we're striking it, she can rewrite the minutes to.
Oh, gotcha, I see what you're saying. Oh, okay, I wasn't, I wasn't.
Our vote was.
Okay, so.
Not be a privilege, but the rewriting, yeah.
Yes.
And then they'll come forth, right?
Correct. The next meeting, along with this meeting, is agenda items.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So that's my motion to postpone this.
Okay. There are six. And there's our second. Eileen, will you call the other one?
Mr. Johnson.
And just to clarify, we're voting only on the minutes without, less the change that was voted on previous.
We're postponing. We're not voting on the minutes, right?
Yes.
We're voting on the postponement.
To allow Eileen to rewrite them. They'll be back next meeting.
Maybe just made a vote based upon removing the word, which is a two to two, with the mayor passing the vote.
So that's where I'm getting.
That's all he, that's all the motion for, Mr. Johnson.
What was the motion, Eileen, that that Mayor Proten Johnson made? What was the motion? Yeah, but once it's approved, he is sent in, it was only to strike the word.
I understand. But that was the motion on that count.
Yes, so we still have to deal with the disposition of the minutes of the whole. We are proposing, under this motion, if you vote yes, it will postpone to the next meeting, allow Eileen to rewrite them, i.e. strike the word, and reduce them to just the business side of the minutes.
Correct.
Yes. Aye. Thank you for your clarity. You're welcome, sir.
Ms. Hillier.
Nay.
Uh, Ms. Shonred.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Wizzenhut.
Aye.
All right, that brings us to item fifteen. I guess it's item seventeen, actually. Under counsel staff announcement to comment, uh, Officer Tim Henderson will celebrate his one-year inversion with Double Oak on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, so. Chief, congratulations for us. Hardly, he's been here one year already. He really has. Uh, I believe he got officer of the year award. That's that's type of us.
Yes, chief, we had, um, visitors over the holidays, we had two little kids. He was patrolling, he stopped down in the neighborhood. He opened up the car, and the kids got in the car. He scared them, which was great. Um, uh, he's, he's just a, he's a, he's just a class guy. And, uh, I I didn't see it. I heard about it, and I thought it was great, so I was very pleased, so. If you could share that with him, I have not seen him, and we're going to as soon as I see him back, so. That was, that was great. It happened right around New Year's.
Very good. All right, the next is, uh, Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three, is the municipal election. Uh, filing period is still open until Friday, the seventeenth, at five P M. Correct. Uh, the town will elect a mayor and also two council. Um, and I have nothing else. Chief, we'll start with you, Rob.
Nothing, sir.
Yes, thank you for your service, you and your folks, and be sure and tell them. All right, Jean? Miss Casey? Scott?
No.
Tommy?
No, I just wanna thank the department, because I've seen more likes on the card of you being able to stop for whatever reason in the school zone, so. Appreciate.
That is usually Officer Henson, too. Right beside my house a lot.
We actually talked about that a little bit today, and and slow down in the school zone. Patrick?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
Randall? Billy? All right, so a motion to adjourn.
Yes, seconds.
Have a motion, second, all in favor. With nine forty-five, I can adjourn. Thank you, everybody.